Is the public meeting then, I'm calling this to order at 6 o'clock, 6:01 PM on March 15th. This is the Montgomery Economic Development Corporation's public meeting held by Zoom. Sorry, I'm not able to get into my thing. We have a full quorum and the first item on the agenda, I believe, is the public hearing. Item number one, convenience of public hearing for the purpose of receiving public comments related to item number one, economic development grant from Troy Tab LLC for a sign at 22453 FM 1097. And item number two, economic development grant from Montgomery Historical Society regarding old Montgomery Cemetery improvement. Richard, have we had anyone comment or wish to comment on these items?
We did not receive any comments before the meeting by email, or I have not heard anyone so far request to speak on public comments on this item.
I see we do have two people from, or three people rather, from the public. Sorry, Councilman Wilkerson, in this meeting it do count as from the public. Do any of these people wish to speak in this section? If you do, please identify yourself with your name and the organization you're from and go forward.
I do have a speaker and I've asked them to unmute.
Okay.
Okay, they're unmuted now. Sergeant, do you wish to speak?
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead, Ben.
My name is Troy Tab and I, good evening all. I would like to take a minute to introduce myself. And my name is Troy Tab and I'm the owner, operator of Troy's Donut location in Montgomery up 105 and a new location fled to open this year of 1097. And I have lived in Montgomery since 2000 and opened donut, Troy's Donut in 2000. And I currently live within the city limit of Montgomery with my wife and two young children. I recently applied for an MEDC grant to help with the expense of the market sign. And this new shopping center will bring in five additional business to the city limit, including a second location for Troy's Donut. Should any of you have any question related to my application, please let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. This is not the time for us to ask questions. This is where the public is speaking. So is anyone else wishing to speak at this, on this item?
Video's off.
Okay, Carol, do you have anyone else wishing to speak?
No, ma'am.
Sorry, I meant, great, sorry, I was thinking, sorry, Susan is who I was thinking of, I was looking at your name. All right, then, I will close the public hearing at 5:06 and convene into the regular meeting and open for the public comments. Richard, you spoke to me earlier and you did not receive any public request to speak during this. We do, I believe, close those at 3:00, so are we good on that, Richard?
We're correct, correct, that's still the case. There were no comments for the general meeting either.
All right, then, let's move along to item number two, approval of minutes. If I may editorialize, Ryan, I must say, that was an excellent bunch of minutes. Thank you very much. Does anyone else have any comments on the content of the public meetings or, sorry, of the minutes? Otherwise.
Yeah, move to accept the minutes.
I'll second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the minutes of the special and annual meeting held on January 19th, 2021. This motion is debatable, amendable, and requires a majority vote. Any further discussion on this item? All those in favor of the motion that we approve the minutes of the special and annual meeting held on January 19th, 2020, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, say no. The motion carries unanimously and we will approve the minutes of the special and annual meeting held on January 19th, 2021. Item number three, approval of the January and February 2021 finance report. Carol.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. On the first page is the report that was through January the 31st. And my only comment on that page is the interest rate at that time was .04%. If you'll keep that in your, in memory, then I'll tell you why. Then on page 24 of your report is the balance and everything through February the 28th. And I'd like to start on that page if we could. The interest rate at that time, when this was done at the end of February, was .03 on our tax pool accounts. And Anthony and Richard are both looking closely at that. And as of today, it was .02. So they are definitely watching it for us on that. The sales tax transfer for February was $112,519.75. And it has been transferred. The third payment for the MISD land, for our land, was also done in, was done on March the 1st. It was transferred. Now, on the next page is the cash flow report. And I am not up to par on this for sure, but the last item on there on February the 26th was a check wrote for the radios for the events. And it was approved back by MEDC in August, the 17th of 2020. And that has, that invoice came through and has been paid for. On the next page, you can go to, down at the bottom is page 28. It is the actual to budget performance for January. And you can see this, the sales tax for that time was $61,541.64. And the year-to-date budget total was $220,000 at the time. We made our first payment to our downtown development improvement project in the amount of $11,627.74. And if you go to the next page, which is page 29 of the report, the net income for October the 20th through January the 21st was $210,212.91. The next page is actual to budget for February, which the sales tax was $112,519.75. And the year-to-date budget was $290,000. We made our second payment to the downtown development improvement project of that $5,646.50. We also made those payments in the next item down there under quality of life for three of the events, I'm sorry, two of the events that happened in December and, yes, they happened in December, I'm sorry, I lost my frame of thought there. So those were done on page 32. Just to kind of let you know that January payments are on that page with the February payments on that page. And then on the next page is where February tax pool reimbursement and the interest on, on the tax pool accounts were put into the account. And then I think next to the last page, number 38, is the general ledger. And you can see where the light-up Montgomery, the Christmas parade, and the goat naming contest amounts were categorized in the general ledger there for this month. Any, any other questions or concerns that I might can help with?
The only comment that I would have is that there was a discussion on the radios that the chief had requested for security purposes for our public events. The MEDC had approved that item, but only in the 2019-2020 budget. And we had kind of, it was at the end of the budget year, of budget cycle. And we had kind of joked that they needed to get those delivered and invoiced in 2019-2020 because we were not going to pay it in 2020-21. And in fact, they didn't get the invoice in until recently. And we sent them back a note that said they could either send us an invoice that reflected a 2019-2020 budget cycle, or they could wait to be paid in 2021-22 budget. So even though the check was paid recently, it will be paid out of the 2019-2020 budget where the MEDC had specifically allocated it to.
Yes, ma'am, that is, that is correct with Anthony. That is my report for tonight.
Fabulous. Does anyone have any other questions for Ms. Carol? On the January and February 2021 finance report? Would anyone like to make a motion on said report?
I'll make a motion to accept the financial report.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the January and February 2021 finance reports as presented. This motion is debatable, amendable, and requires the majority vote. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all favor, all in favor of the motion that we approve the January and February 2021 finance report, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. The motion passes unanimously and we do approve the January and February 2021 finance report. Item number four, consideration of economic development grant application from Ryan Lundin for a historical marker for the Chilton House and consider calling a public hearing if necessary. Richard?
Okay, taking this forward, before I start on the content, I just want to make a brief mention. The agenda packs that you're looking at are formatted slightly differently, you know, with two minor changes. If you look in the upper right-hand corner on any particular page in a rectangle at the upper right corner, it'll tell you what agenda item that item is for. If you find yourself flipping through the sheets trying to get to a particular item. So this one is agenda item four. All the items that attach to this report, they will also cite item four. In a square shaded box at the bottom right-hand corner, you know, is a box with the number. That is the page number that runs throughout the whole agenda pack. So if you end up looking for a particular page, as Carol used those numbers to guide through the financial report, those number, that one set of numbers formatted that way in that square goes all the way through from page one till the very end.
So. I thought that Ryan had made that happen. I loved it. Either way, whoever the author is, I approve.
Yeah. We're here to make all of you look good, so. Back to the topic at hand, the economic development grants fall within the authority of the MEDC to grant where the directors feel they are appropriate. MEDC funds used in this manner are intended to promote new business development or enhance development of existing businesses. I've reviewed the request for several considerations prior to coming to the board of directors. You know, those considerations include, is this type of expenditure appropriate and legal for consideration? In this case, the Chilton House is a location on the city's district's tour of historic locations. So it's already recognized by the city and MEDC for its historic and tourism value to Montgomery, which allows MEDC to consider this item for an economic development grant. What is the perceived economic benefit? Economic benefit-related tourism and quality of life considerations, which are allowable considerations, are less direct, but they're still important considerations to the community. These are drivers that bring people into the community and those same people also engage in commerce activities that drive the economy. Number three is the location for this grant in the city. Yes, this location for noted for this request is in the city. Does the proposed work to be done under this grant conform to city requirements? The proposed signage was reviewed by the city's director of planning and development. He concluded that this work will not require a specific city permit for this type of sign. In the past, MEDC has typically limited economic development grants to 33.3%, up to a total cost of $5,000. Mr. Lundin has asked the MEDC board to consider a full or partial grant of the $1,175 for the sign and the historic marker post. The appropriate action for tonight is to conduct this as a first reading at this meeting, which we have done. If the MEDC board of directors might want to consider this item, then the proper action tonight is to call a public hearing for our next meeting, place this item on the agenda for the regular meeting for formal consideration at that time. If the board of directors does not want to consider this request, you could simply take no action or vote to not, or vote to not move it forward.
So I have two questions. First, Ryan, did I understand your notes back and forth that this is no longer a time-sensitive thing? Because due to something that happened in Conroe, the filing date for this year, it has passed?
Yeah, correct. I am, so what needs to happen is that the application needs to be approved by the Montgomery County Historic Commission. And so I submitted that earlier this year in anticipation of having it approved at their March meeting, or maybe it's their February, no, early March meeting. And in order to get the grant applicant, or sorry, the marker application to the state of Texas by May. Since they only have two meetings or a meeting every other month, that was the deadline, basically it was early March. And so I submitted the application, but the committee members who review these applications on Historic Commission had, weren't able to review it before their March meeting. So essentially, the deadline has passed and so it's no longer a time sensitive thing. I won't be able to get it in front of the Historic Commission until next year. So definitely not a time sensitive thing, but I figured I'd go ahead and I still want the marker on the house for sure. So I just figured we could leave it on the agenda and, and for next year, in anticipation of next year.
So what I've been noticing with what's been happening on the tourism Facebook page is that people are wild for Montgomery history. And I'm wondering if this even belongs in this category? And if we ought to do something as a board to encourage every place that should have this type of marker to get one by, by having a grant program specifically for these markers to, you know, and obviously the Texas marker, or actually maybe the, the national marker would obviously be, you know, the number one. And then the Texas and then I guess the county would be the least, and obviously the least costly as well. But to encourage people to go through the trouble to do it, you know, we should be in, you know, financially pushing people or sponsoring people to do this. And so maybe not in the grant program by saying, you know, we'll only give you half. But, you know, by, by really putting money behind it, because again, this brings people here. And if we can have a trail of these historic markers all over the city, I think it really could be beneficial both, not just social media, but in footsteps to the city and, you know, dining, because when people, you know, finish, you know, that's a historic. I mean, I know that there's like a historic wine trail, so you know, step through the city and then stop at the historic wine trail, final stop, or something like that, you know, spending dollars here as well. Jeff, you're on mute.
Yeah, I think. I couldn't agree more. I, I, we are part of the seventh grade project. I cannot tell you the number of people that, that come by there. And it's fantastic because they, even kids who are not really enthusiastic about Texas history, of course, they're seventh graders, but when they, when they get in there and they start hearing the history of the homes and they hear some of the famous names, the famous people that have been there. And I was fascinated with the Chilton House. When I read this, I had no idea and was completely blown away by, by the historic foundations that came out of our town. It's so cool. So I totally agree with you, Becky. I think we really should encourage other, you know, of course, we're on, we're designated as a Texas historical location, but there's others in our community that should be rewarded for, for jumping in like Ryan did and, and attempting to get that recognized. So anyway, my two cents is absolutely anything we can do to encourage that. It was such a cool thing for our city and, and people, when they get into it and see it, they're very, very enthralled about it.
Yeah, I agree. And others, there's, there's also several structures around the city that don't have, most people don't know that they're there. There's the, the, can't think of any else off the top of my head. There's a few on College Street. Yeah, the Matilda, yeah. The Matilda House on College Street, it used to be, is connected to, there's a daughter of one of the signers of the Texas Declaration of Independence. And one of the earlier Montgomery County sheriffs is in that, was in that house. And then there's the, the house near the Wing Shop, which is a historic house that doesn't have a marker. And so there's these, there's these structures around Montgomery that have historical significance that are not, that most people don't know about or not being recognized because they don't have a historical marker on them. And, and for people like, you know, people who are private residents in the structure, in these houses, it's kind of hard to, you know, have, set aside money for a marker. So there's not really a strong incentive for people to put the markers up there. So maybe the city or the MEDC can kind of incentivize people to put these markers out. And there's, there's plenty of people like me or the Montgomery County Historic Commission or the Historic Society, you can do the research to help promote these historical structures and get the markers. And there's the Texas Historic Marker, but there's also the County Marker for less significant historical structures as well. So I wholly agree.
But I'd like to see if we could maybe look for a spot where maybe we could amend our budget to create even for this year or just for next year. So, sorry, so it's not just in, you know, the, the grant, which is kind of a different, I apologize, I don't know how to turn that off. So it's not just in this year.
Well, I can take that on during the course of the month and bring that back for the next meeting of looking for a way to, you know, find the funds to put in the budget for the remainder of this year. Or at the very least, if can't do that, outline a process where we could look to include it in the budget for the next fiscal year.
Right. Ryan, do you know what the county's cycle looks like for their recognition? I mean, I'd love to have all of them be Texas markers, but I guess, you know, you can't always get what you want, I hear.
Yeah, they have their own marker program. From what I could tell, it takes less time and I would say probably maybe a year. I think I could, I could reach out to Mr. Forster and kind of see what the timeline would be on, on those. But it's not as intensive as doing this Texas Historic Marker. It's just, it's mostly local, so it's a little bit more.
I mean, the cachet of having the Texas ones, and then they're so gigantic and beautiful. And it just seems like this is something, you know, I guess, so if we're at least a year on the cycle before we're eligible to even start, you know, by budget season, maybe we can have identified how many we think we can get next budget cycle and then put that in. Because I mean, it's almost budget time again. So.
Yeah.
But I really think that that would enhance, you know, A, our knowledge about our own city, B, tourism, and C, maybe the, the care for some of the buildings that people are not aware of the history of.
I agree. And I think it will draw in people who do subject marker hunting. They basically look on the Atlas maps or go to the historic, Texas Historic Commission's website and they just go look for markers, kind of like a geocaching type thing. So, and I know whenever we have people over to our house, we usually take a walk around. We go to the different shops or whatever. And on the way, we talk about different historical structures and usually there's strong interest. Like, oh, I didn't know that there's all these, this history in Montgomery. I thought, I've never really realized it until we walked around. So I think it's kind of, Montgomery's kind of undertold currently as far as all the history that's here. And so I think promoting these signs and these structures would help bring people into the downtown region, so.
Absolutely. So, I mean, I think that that's a great way forward to, because I'm 100% behind promoting, you know, the MEDC paying for every Texas historical marker that we can get in the city. Because I think it's money that will come back to us in visitors. And again, it's content for brochures, it's content for social media, it's content for, you know, things to do in terms of working with, you know, tourism. People want to do something and you can do scavenger hunts and things like that. If you have more things that people should be knowing about, it can be based around things like that. And you can even do geocaching with those too.
Love that. I was thinking that the grown-up, a grown-up version of the scavenger hunt can, can, could easily be adopted where, where people can come to the various businesses that, all of us have businesses that, that we could encourage you, maybe have the, you know, in our case, the Willis Brothers' favorite drink. Or, you know, maybe, maybe it all ends with a Texas flag. I don't know, I'm just throwing things out. But I, I, I'm thinking there's various, even those of us on this call here who have businesses that could be, be supported through a scavenger-type event for adults. And it would be a lot of fun. What do you think, Tom? Do you, are you guys part of that? I mean, you're right there on the main street, you've got to be historic, right?
Um, no, that building is not historic. It's, it's not really that old. It's been, oh, I mean, it's been, the original structure was, but, but the original structure is no longer there. I mean, it's been so many things and people have added on to it and things. But we, I don't think we have any historical significance at all.
Got you. Yeah, I just see a lot of people coming through that have, they get so fascinated when they hear it, like Ryan was saying. It's, it's almost, it's such an attraction and we need more attractions. And, you know, even if we run the trail through some of the businesses that aren't historic, but give them an opportunity to participate in some way, you know, you know, Stagecoach Alley or something along those lines. Anyway, a great idea, Becky, to get this moving along because we should encourage it. It's, it's really an attraction.
Right. And Richard and I had a meeting ages ago with Margaritaville. And they said specifically they were looking for exclusive activities, we'll call it. But there, it's essentially. it's essentially tours for their guests. And that has to be based on something, um, you know, and part of its ideas, but it has to be, you know, Montgomery or Texas or Cowboy or something that resonates with the area that their guests will want to do.
Totally agree.
So the, the, you know, our history is really what makes us, uh, special.
Yep.
Well, among our, you know, other things, food and drink for sure helps.
Yeah.
So, um, it sounds like we're comfortable tabling this item with the direction to go ahead and make sure that this is a specific item for our 2021, 22 budget. And the intention is to sponsor fully Texas, um, uh, historical markers and possibly consider county markers.
Yeah.
We'll just have to figure out how, how many that we'll need. Ryan, is, do you think the price is going up?
Um, they just got a new contract with the foundry, and so I think the cost should be stable now based off of what I presented. And I think the county historic marker uses the same foundry, so.
Okay. Okay. So maybe in the range, expecting maybe three or four per year, imagining something like that?
Yeah. Maybe three. I don't, it depends on, I mean, they're probably going to be more on the front end as we kind of discover some of these older structures that are underrepresented and then probably tapers down as we kind of cover the ones that we know about, yeah.
Right. Absolutely.
Maybe to consider that if, uh, you know, once this is something that we would announce and make public, uh, there might be some who would then choose to, who know they could pursue it or choosing not to right now, but with the help of, you know, the Historic Commission and the financial help from the EDC, might make that trace the other way. So I could see that number potentially even going a bit higher. But if it did, that'd be to our benefit for the goal.
Yep. Yep. All right then. So, um, with your permission then, we'll move from item number four to item number five, consideration of economic development grant from TroyTEP LLC for a sign at 22453FM1097. Um, Richard, I was interested to not see the, um, city's form for a sign application for the sign. Cause that might've cleared up a few things, uh, questions that I had.
Okay, you're talking about for the, an application for the city's sign permit?
Right. Cause you can't actually put in a sign unless you have a city permit, right?
Uh, well, we, true. You know, we have not yet received a permit application for this one, uh, so, uh, we don't, we don't have that yet here in the, yeah, I guess here in the permit department.
So if there's no actual sign permit, then this is a theoretical discussion?
Well, I expect, uh, I, I'm assuming Mr. Tepp was looking to see if he might get, uh, be able to get MEDC support before he might file the application, but, but as of this point, we don't have that application, so I can't speak for him.
Um, I mean, I'm personally not comfortable having a discussion about an item that I don't know whether it's even meeting city regulations and standards, um, et cetera. I prefer that we have this discussion after the sign has been submitted, the permit has been submitted. But it's, I mean, the rest of the board obviously needs to weigh in on this.
I think this gentleman has been waiting a very long time to see which direction it's going to go. So I don't think it'd be fair to him to continue to, uh, push it back and table it. Um, I know when he initially made application, it's been several months. In all fairness to him, I think we need to give him the direction that the, uh, the board wants to go, so he'll know otherwise what he needs to do.
Right. I just find it difficult because, you know, the application is for one thing, the, the picture is for another thing, the, the bid is for another thing altogether, and what the sign applications that it could be for is for a fifth thing entirely. So without the clarity that comes from what is actually being applied for, and again, the bid is for a sign that is not matching what the written declaration is for what is actually going to be built, I find it very difficult to put a dollar value on any, um, any financial support.
Maybe we don't approve anything in this meeting, but we have discussion on what we think the MEDC board is leaning toward one way or the other, and, and then table it until we get a permit.
Well, in the past, has, uh, the EDC paid for signage on, on businesses?
Generally not new signs, the exception being the Pizza Shack relocation, as far as I'm aware. But that was, um, many years ago.
And Dan, I can tell you, I've, I've been with the city just under two years. Uh, during that time, there's not been a sign. The only other one that I'm familiar with that is a sign is what was, is, uh, as Becky just said, was the one for Pizza Shack. That was also, I, I know other work was done for Pizza Shack as well, because that included a big, you know, utility lines. But I, I don't know about, you know, any farther back than that to answer as much as I can to that, Dan.
I'm kind of confused on what the intent of this sign grant application is it, was it intended for new signs? Cause to me, business signs seem to be a part of the typical business expenditure that's expected whenever you build these things. Um, so I don't, I don't know if that was the intent for us to subsidize new businesses. Um, I get, it helps bring in business, but I'm just, I, I don't know.
Ryan, Ryan, to that point, that was something I, I wasn't entirely clear on, and I did speak to the city's attorney on that. Uh, that's where, uh, on the item number one in the discussion point of the agenda report, the underlying portion where it says for the MEDC to approve this grant, the MEDC Board of Directors must determine the signage will promote expanded business development. That comes straight from the attorney's advice to me. Uh, you know, that goes to what the, uh, what the point of an economic development grant is meant to do. And so the, the MEDC must believe, you know, if it's approving an economic development grant, you know, for a business, that you have to be able to determine that, you know, that, that the signage will promote expanded business development. Now, it does leave you room to interpret what expanded business development means, but you have to be able to make it fit within, within that wording there to comply with the state law. And so.
I'm not entirely comfortable that, you know, starting up a, a new business, like Brian said, if, you know, an entirely new location does that. I do think, you know, with the reference to the Pizza Shack location, that was a relocation and a sizable increase in their square footage, whereas if they had stayed at the, at the previous location, they would have, um, not expanded, uh, in several ways. So, you know, that, you know, I was not on the board, but that does make point number one a little bit more easily.
I guess my question would be, I mean, are we giving grants for new businesses and/or are we in the business of possibly doing loans for these company, for these new businesses coming in? I, I mean, what's to, what's to keep Kroger from coming down and wanting something to help make a bigger sign for them, so?
Yeah, that's kind of my question too, is, is every business now going to come to the MEDC for, for signs? And, but really, this is the first one we've seen, so if it's not, I'm new and I don't, it doesn't sound like this is pres, there's a precedent for this, so, um, in, in my mind, it's, it's, a new sign is, is a typical thing that you budget for, for a new business. I would think this grant would be to help existing businesses, maybe to help promote businesses, local regions, I don't know. Tom, I'm a little bit on the fence on, on whether this is appropriate or not for that item, I guess.
So I'm not sensing a lot of enthusiasm. Do we want to table it or, um, just turn it down? Or, um, Tom, do you want to make a motion to approve it and see what happens?
I would like to table it and have Troy come in, have him on the agenda and sell it to us why we need to do it. Um, it, it would probably set some, some sort of precedent, although Pizza Shack could be considered precedent setting, but I would like to table it, uh, give him one more opportunity, make the sign application, get it approved, and then come back and convince the MEDC why we need to help or make the expenditure.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to table this item. This motion is debatable, amendable, and requires a majority vote. All those in favor of tabling item number five, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. This item, uh, this motion passes unanimously and we will table item number five. Item number six, consideration of economic development grant from Montgomery Historical Society regarding Old Montgomery Cemetery Improvement. Richard?
Scan down to, I don't know, it's still in the one above it.
I thought I'd floored you. Go on.
Uh, at the same time, I clicked on a window and I think I clicked on the background and I had to suddenly reopen everything and, uh...
No, we can be flexible with you. I was flustered in the beginning, so, uh, we can give you a moment to catch up in the middle.
Thank you. Sometimes I'm still adapting to the 21st century. Okay, this was, uh, the Montgomery Historical Society, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Without going through necessarily all of the things, I had a lot of similar wording on the agenda report, uh, you know, for, for economic development grant, uh, you know, before coming to the Board of Directors, you know, you know, I field them and review them for certain considerations. You know, again, uh, is this expenditure legal or appropriate? You know, the answer is work of this type can be considered to add to the aesthetic appearance of the community. Given Montgomery's identification with its history, this can also potentially add and improve the appearance of a tourism site. Each of these reasons, uh, makes this potentially a permissible expense. Uh, well, what is the perceived economic benefit? Economic benefit could be related to tourism and quality of life considerations. Each of these are separate allowable considerations for a grant from the EDC. Uh, they may be less direct, uh, but they're still potentially important. These are drivers that bring people into the community, uh, those people coming into the community, engage in the activities of commerce that drive the local economy. Is this location for the grant request in the city? Yes, this location is noted in the application, is in the city. Does the proposed work to be done under the grant conform to city requirements? The proposed fence was reviewed by the city's Director of Planning and Development. He concluded this work will require, uh, city planning and zoning commission approval since the cemetery is a city designated, designated landmark. Uh, in the past, the MEDC has typically limited, uh, these grants to 33.3% of the total cost, up to a $5,000 maximum. Uh, the applicant is requesting $900 to $500 for a total, uh, and I have in here $16,766. He gave, included within the supporting documentations, uh, he gave me some increases, I think that included steel costs, that they're not asking for additional EDC input from the original request, but I believe it drives the $16,766 figure upward, and I did not amend that part of the report. And I believe I saw Mr. Jones online earlier. I'm not sure if he is still with us here.
Yes, I'm here, if you can hear me.
I'm sorry, I missed you there in the bottom corner of my screen. Apologize for that.
Yes.
Right. Although you did not, although you did not speak to, sign up to speak in public comments, so, um, let's just wait and see if we have questions. Um, so, board, let's hear what, um, uh, what your thoughts are.
I, I, I do have a question. How is the fund, how are they going to be allocated in terms of, th- this isn't for the entire amount of the project? So who's funding the remaining portions?
So on page 78, it shows the, um, allocation. Jeff?
Page 78. Okay. Uh, I got you. Okay. I see it now. I did, I, I saw the alloc, uh, I see the Lutheran Church is going to participate as well, okay. Um, and so, uh, what is the, uh, did they say that the time for completing this is 68 months? Did I understand that? Or is it, is it just a, uh, i- is it a quick, quick turnaround? Mr. Jones?
I believe it's, uh, okay.
Yes, it's a, a fairly quick turnaround. Uh, once the funding is approved, uh, we say go to the contractor and it won't take very long to complete the project.
Got it. Well, has, is there any precedent for us, uh, the MEDC ever, ever providing, uh, you know, grants or assistance of anything more than, uh, $5,000? And if so, are there any, um, is there any chance for recouping that in any way? Or is it the, the excess?
Well, did, if, if you'll permit me, this is probably not the right category to, to be requesting money, but, uh, I don't know what other one to, that might fit, but it's a more of a community project than a, a business development project. And, um, so I think there would have to be, uh, some sort of consideration for that and to be able to look at the, going over the 5,000 limit.
But to answer your question, Jeff, the MEDC is notorious for $9,900 grants or $9,500 grants that get us under the $10,000 limit and avoiding going to city council. Um, whether or not you think that's a good policy? I mean, my personal preference is not. Um, if it's a good, if it's a good idea, then council should agree as well.
Well, I, I like the look of the fence and I was just drove by there, I drove by there yesterday just to kind of check it out and see what it looked like. Um, and it definitely needs some improvement, no question. It's all chain link now and it's dilapidated. Uh, if, if the goal is to move towards a more, uh, concentric policy, uh, towards creating, um, uh, you know, a community vibe of, of history, and, and we're going to embrace that, uh, that track, um, you know, it's probably not a bad idea to clean up the, the cemetery too, because it's going to be a big portion of that.
Um, I have a question. Mr. Jones, did you reach out to the Montgomery County Historic, um, Commission? Cause I know they've got grant funding as well from the county dedicated toward projects like similar to this.
Yeah, the Historical Society, uh, does often seek grants from the, uh, from the county. They do have a limited budget, uh, as well, but, um, the only way they will give a grant is after the expenditure's already been made, and then you can, uh, request reimbursement. So that's the intention of the Historical Society, once the project is finished, to try to recoup some of it back.
Okay. And I noticed that the schematic that was provided, um, had brick corner posts, um, that you're not providing now. Is there anticipation that those will be added later? Or are we talking strictly just a wrought iron fence now until who knows how long?
At, at this, at this moment, just the wrought iron fence to get rid of the unsightly chain link fence and, uh, the- The schematic that you saw is a vision from Chris Cheatham of something more spectacular and. And I think that that can be done in the future, maybe with various Eagle Scout projects or or another. Funding through ME DC or or something, but at this time, we just want to get rid of the chain link.
So it sounds like there's local business interest in improving the aesthetics of the area, it's kind of gathering. With Joe Cheatham. Bring that together. Becky, is this, or or Richard, is this in, is this area under the scope of the downtown improvement project?
This is outside the area that is being looked at right now for the downtown improvement project, but is within the historic district.
So am I hearing this correctly, that not only are you asking the ME DC to pay for more than half? That the way that this might work out is that the Historical Society could end up paying zero because the county will reimburse. You guys, but not us.
They they would be the ones seeking the the grant, yes.
Kirk, who is, who did the funding come from when your son did the new cemetery? Was was it council or was it, was it the city or ME DC?
It was ME DC.
Okay, that's what I thought. So so there is somewhat of a precedent. What was the amount for that? You remember offhand?
Well, the the labor was cheap, but the material cost, I think, was. About twenty five hundred or something like that. It was much smaller project.
Okay, okay. I think, you know, this and we just talked about the historical significance of a lot of the buildings and signage needed. This certainly is a historical cemetery next to a historical church in a historical part of town. So I think we really need to take that into consideration and, you know, we did fund the. The bell or the whatever it's called at the church about a year and a half ago, two years ago, so. I have no problem with this at all, even the ninety five or whatever the amount is and not, I I think it's money well spent.
Yeah, I think, I think the project is a great idea. I think if you, I mean, I live two blocks from there and it. It just looks like, almost like a haunted cemetery. And which is, which is potentially a future commercial center for the city with, we've got more development to the west, so. I think it would definitely be a huge benefit to the downtown area. I just want to make sure that it's done correctly. I would, I was just curious if there's other ways to maybe get those corner posts put in or some other funding opportunities. Through like the historic commission, but it sounds like you are going to do the wrought iron fence and then ask for reimbursement on the fence itself, so. But whatever the case, I think the wrought iron fence is going to be much better aesthetically over the current. Dilapidated chain link fence, and so I I think I support the project as well. So I kind of, I agree with Tom on this.
I agree with Tom too. Hey, Kirk, I do have one last question. If the, if the. Montgomery Historical Society were to be reimbursed, do you think they might take some of the reimbursement and allocate it towards? Perhaps creating this vision a little closer to the photo? Are do you, are there any plans to, you know, phase one, phase two, phase three, any of that? Because, you know, this is really pretty, but but, you know, just, just the fence will do, do it a world of good, but this is a pretty cool looking design.
Oh, I think it, we haven't really discussed it that far yet, but I think it'd be a good idea, idea to parlay. Whatever grants we get into the next phase if.
Yeah, I'm sure business would support that in the area, Cheatham, as well as some of the other businesses in the area. Might be able to, you know, lend some support to it. To get it, to get it to this vision, because I I I think if we're moving towards the historic nature of all things Montgomery, then. This is kind of a centerpiece and probably needs to be, you know, recognized.
Well, this, this site does have a Texas historical marker and and it, like you said, it is one of the treasures of of the city.
Yeah.
The historical marker does need to be replaced probably, but that's another project.
Yeah, everything old needs to be new again at some point, agreed. Okay, well, should we make a motion?
I have, sorry, I have one more question if I can. Were you, did you approach the Methodist, because this was their church or their cemetery, right? This is the old Methodist cemetery?
It was. But they gave up ownership to the Historical Society and I guess, in a lot of respects, the Historical Society and. ME DC kind of represent the public interest in the historic nature of it, so I I did not. I did not talk to the Methodist.
The the name of that cemetery is called, isn't it, is it called the Methodist Churchyard, or is it the old Churchyard, or do, what's the name of it officially? I recall.
I think it's the Old Montgomery Cemetery.
Okay.
It it's probably referred to the Methodist Churchyard in some different writings, but.
I I do know there's several historical figures buried there, so there is historical significance. I know like the Thomas Chilton, my house is buried there. The Matilda, the Matilda or. There's, there's several older residents who are buried there, so there's still, there is very historical significance to it, obviously, so.
Well, those seventh graders are crawling all over it, still.
Yeah, they are.
Right, but I I don't think it's fair to say that the ME DC took responsibility for its upkeep. That was, that's a gross exaggeration of whatever happened, the Historical Society might have, but the ME DC did not. So by agreeing to do this project, that does not encompass us with any further responsibility.
That's, that's not requested or implied.
Right, but that is what you said earlier.
No, what I said is that. The Historical Society and ME DC and the kind of have a representation interest of the entire community. More so than just the churches and. The Lutherans agreed to participate because it's immediately adjacent and they got a nice new building and that fence doesn't do much for their. For their view, so that's why they agreed to participate, but.
Okay, we seem to have lost Tom. Richard, do you see him trying to get back in?
I do not see him on here. He has not texted me. Susan, Susan's left and she usually is supposed to transfer.
Yep.
The control of the meeting to me. I can run down to check her computer just to verify that, you know, she hadn't left.
I think I, I think I saw that she did transfer the responsibility to you.
Okay.
Yeah, I saw that too.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I have, I have my participant screen open. If if someone's trying to, waiting room, it should pop up, but there.
Okay, all right. I just wanted to make sure that I gave him the opportunity to be part of this. Does anyone have any other questions or want to?
I guess my only can, only concern would be that we don't have any. Numbers to to prove that there's an economic benefit to the city on this, but since there is precedent with funding. We say the 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 new church bell tower for Lutheran Church was funded by the, partially funded by the ME DC, so. And we also did the new cemetery, so I guess there is precedent there, but.
I I voted against the bell tower, so I'm not a good one to ask about that.
And Ryan, to some degree, with items that are, might be, you know, a bit softer on the expense side. Yeah, it comes down to judgment of the EDC, what the benefit is.
Right, I think that there's a clear, I like we were talking earlier with the. The monument signs, I think that there's a clear tourism benefit and and the cemeteries are part of. Oddly enough, the cemetery is part of our tourism allure, because it is part of our history.
I agree. Especially if we're moving in that direction.
Yeah, I agree too.
Shall we make a motion?
And for the record, let me just know that Tom Cronin's back in the meeting here.
Okay.
Sorry, I lost my internet connection.
Good, so what's the final, what's the amount for on the? I don't remember, sorry.
None of the grant requests is for ninety five hundred dollars in total. And the company contracted to do the work is the Titan Fence Company.
But to be clear, we would not pay until the invoice for completion and satisfactory completion was received, right?
That would be typical of my past understanding of the EDC.
Yeah. I'll entertain a motion if everyone's done with, is comfortable with this item.
I'll move to approve the grant application for the economic development grant for Montgomery County Historic Society. Regarding the Old Montgomery Cemetery improvements for ninety five hundred dollars.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the economic development grant in the amount of ninety five hundred dollars for Montgomery Historical Society. Regarding Old Montgomery Cemetery improvements. This motion is debatable, amendable, and requires a majority vote. Any further discussion on this item? All those in favor of the motion that we approve the economic development grant in the amount of ninety five hundred dollars for Montgomery Historical Society. Regarding Old Montgomery Cemetery improvements, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion passes unanimously and we will approve the economic development grant from Montgomery County. Or sorry, Montgomery Historical Society regarding Old Montgomery Cemetery improvements in the amount of ninety five hundred dollars. Richard, make sure to remind us next time we get one where we are in the total amount, because that is a limited budget item.
Right, yeah, twenty thousand dollars total budgeted for that category, so that's ninety five hundred of that total.
Okay, great.
Excuse me, Becky, I'm gonna have to duck out. I had a seven o'clock commitment. Is there anything more you need from me right now, or? Are you okay?
No idea what we're doing. We're gonna assign you to so many things while you're gone. It'll be fun.
I can't wait. I'll be refreshed and ready to go again tomorrow, but if you need me for anything, you're welcome to text me. I just gotta do a little. A little cooking for this, this group I've got going over here, okay?
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, thank you, guys.
Thanks, Jeff.
All right then, moving on to item number seven, consideration of signage grant policy.
Okay, in 2020, there were relatively few grant requests that came through the EDC. And I'm sure that was at least partly due to the great pandemic that we've seen. The EDC recently received several inquiries on grant requests that included signage. Two that you discussed earlier this meeting. I did research related to grants for signs and discussions. Had some discussion with the city attorney. Saw that they're online with other EDCs that at least one had a very, a specific policy related to signs. And and after, after my discussions with the city attorney, you know, yeah. He advised, and I agree with him, about being too liberal and providing signs. Sign grants, and that was part of the reason why in that agenda report item earlier, I led you just. You have the language that you have to make a determination of the economic benefit. So one particular item of note in providing a grant of this type, as I, as I said there. Is the determination from the ME DC board that the grant would promote expanded business development. And that was the language from the attorney that was key related to signs. And that can be difficult when applied to a sign, which other, might otherwise be considered an ordinary business expense. I believe that was something Ryan mentioned earlier. So for my review of this item, I developed a draft of a policy based on a similar policy used in another EDC. And I've attempted to draft what I thought would be at least a starting point for reasonable guidelines that would help the ME DC. With with respect to approving grant signs. So that draft, you know, was attached and has been sent out to you, you know, I. Would, I guess, throw this out for questions or comments. Is this some, is this a direction that the EDC would like to see go forward? Is this something that you think is is ready for action sooner? Is it something you want to look at and come back and review? In another month, basically, I guess I'm throwing, throwing this for comments out to the board.
My preference is always more written guidance for both ourselves. And our constituents to, to look at and also to reduce the amount of. I don't want to say flip flopping, but certainly swerving back and forth based on. You know, who the applicant is, who comes to meetings, that kind of thing. I mean, I think that straightforward policy. Or as straightforward as policies can be anyway, it makes it easier for everyone to understand. And also for us to make sure that we're following within guidelines. Like you said, it was, you know, item number one is a very difficult thing to. To make sure that we're following within and based on, you know, like Ryan in particular's questions, which were similar to my questions, you know, that is. A really important item in basic business expenses, so what things are not basic business expenses or what is part of economic development? And, you know, this policy might go a long way towards, you know, helping everyone. Figure out what is, you know, what our sign policy is, should be adapted.
And and part of my consideration also was maybe a bit selfishly from my perspective here, you know, within the city hall building is. When we're talking to people who might be making requests, it's a lot easier for us if we have a concrete. Guideline to follow that is more specific or at least more well outlined than if it's more broad. Because there there's just more to follow there and easier for us to say something concrete that someone can follow.
Right. I'm also sure that you liked the part, I I lost it here, but somewhere where it said that this must be submitted no less than fourteen days prior. So that gives a stop as well, like a specific, well, no, I mean, it it sounds. But, you know, you guys need enough time to, you know, get all of the paperwork in order, as opposed to things that are on the Wednesday before the meeting and then. You know, shuffling it all in, that, you know, having expectations that, you know, things don't get considered at the last minute is also an important part of. You know, behaving. You know, like a grown up business.
Oh, that, well, that's quite true. I know there was one case, and this was something last. I think it was last spring or maybe it was earlier than that. It was either the first or second grant request that I saw come through and I believe it was received. On the, either, I think it was the Wednesday before the meeting and we, you know, here at city hall, we felt like we had to. You know, bend over backward to make sure we could get that, we could get that looked at and into the agenda and, you know. And unfortunately, sometimes there's other things going on here at city hall that we're trying to get done while we're also getting ready for an EDC meeting. You know, I, you probably shouldn't be saying that to the EDC board, that there are other important things going on here, but I think everyone knows that. Certainly, we want to try to get everything done for the public as much as possible, so being able to have a specific timeline on there. Yeah, yeah, it, you know, where it says fourteen days, if it came in thirteen days ahead, we're not going to tell someone categorically, no, we wouldn't do it. But at least having that out there helps us have the timeline to be able to do it properly and get everything to review it needs before. It goes to the ME DC board.
Right. I also like the, the specifics on, you know, the the sign needs to be exactly what was submitted. You know, there have been some, some items that weren't entirely clear. Was that actually what we? What we agreed to? So that's nice, and I think it's appropriate as well.
Well, that, that comes from experience in my career of, you know, maybe not specific to grants, but specific to permitting approvals. If it's, if it's something that comes in, in a submission, it needs, you know, if that's, if the submission is what is approved. That's what needs to go in place. In this particular case, it isn't just a city permit. The ME DC is putting, putting its money, which is public money down. So the ME DC board has an obligation to, to follow. So the MEDC Board has an obligation to, to follow through with that properly.
Right. I think that makes sense. And again, you know, it's very clear, you know, what the expectations are. And so I find that it's easier, you know, it's your hurt feelings if both sides know what the expectations are and they're very clearly delineated in a policy. And if the policy needs to change, then you change the policy and that's okay. But if not, as long as the policy is the policy, then both sides stick to it. What do you think, Ryan?
I think I'd like to read it through a little bit more thoroughly before I vote on it. But I think it's generally a good idea. I agree with both you and Richard. Something clear and concrete would be, would be nice to have.
Dan, I've noticed you took yourself off mute.
Yeah, yeah, clear guidelines, I'm definitely for that. I think it'd be something that we need to put on the agenda for next month after we've reviewed this.
Okay, Carol?
I agree also, I haven't read it completely. I found a couple of things I'd like to question a little bit, but I would like to see it brought back to the board.
And Tom, last but not least, you're, I'm going clockwise here.
Yeah, the, the same. I, I think give us some time to kind of digest it, maybe come up with a, maybe some suggestions if necessary. But I think it's definitely the right direction.
Okay, it sounds like we're all on the same page then, that's fabulous.
I'll plan to bring it back next month. And for, for anyone who's got questions or comments that you think needs an answer to prior to the next meeting, by all means, reach out to me. I'll see what I can do to answer that. Otherwise, they can be the discussion points next month. And the, this can be the starting point framework for that discussion.
Okay, then, it sounds like by common consent then, item number eight will be detailed until, or sorry, item number seven will be detailed until the next meeting. Item number eight, consideration of funding specific budget items under existing categories and current MEDC budget.
Okay, we've moved forward with preliminary planning for several items, primarily events that are ready to provide budget planning numbers to the Board of Directors to be included in the annual budget. And several of the larger budget accounts such as forty two zero zero two point three events, funds are unrestricted pending allocation to specific items, you know, as the planning moves, would move forward on those items. The attack sheets provide a summary of the planning figures for these items that are being brought forward to the MEDC for approval. And then following, there are a line by line basic outline of the planning budget for five different items on the next two sheets, which I will, I won't go through line by line, but if there's questions in general or specific, I'd be happy to try to take those. And these are, some of these are, are repeat and some of these are new.
So I think the only repeat item is the Water Party. So this would be the third year for the Water Party.
Well, that's true, that would be the only repeat as I scan back through.
Yeah, that, that event's been super popular, it's kind of a neighborhood-ish event. How many people would you say came, not last year obviously, but the summer before?
It was easily several hundred, I want to say that number, as I recall, is probably around three fifty for an item that was a, you know, a low budget, not highly advertised event. It was really strictly just a local event. For those unfamiliar with it, we were on the grounds of the community center in downtown, had, I think, three different primary large inflatable items that were, you know, the big water slide, those big inflatable items. And we had several other items around the area, an area dedicated for toddlers, you know, an inflatable that was just for smaller age children, so a space for larger age children. We had some wading pools in the area. We had some water, water specific toys. And it was just essentially a fun, you know, summer morning into early afternoon to be out there for kids to play in the water. Some parents came and also did shopping while they were in the area. But it was, but it was very well received.
So the Fernland dedication and the pet parade, those are new. The quilt walk is new and the goat parade is new.
Right, well, and with regards to the Fernland, this is gonna be set to time with the tenth anniversary of the Fernland dedication. So this, this is being considered really as a one-time event timed for the tenth anniversary. And so we're still working with the Fernland, some, some of the Fernland staff to bring parts of it together. So that's why there's an unplanned portion there still within the estimate that hasn't been fully fleshed out.
Who's the, I guess, the brainchild and coordinator for all these events?
It's a little bit different as you go through it. The, the, for instance, the Water Party is primarily led by city staff. The city secretary is probably best the brains behind that one in the past. The Fernland dedication's got a couple of people, but the, yeah, one of the, one of the docents with Fernland is probably, you know, I guess you'd be, probably gonna be the brains behind that one. I'm the one organizing, you know, with the Goat Song Parade. The Pet Parade, we're, we're just at the very beginning for, so I'm not even gonna plant there, say there's just brains to the operation there. And the Quilt Walk is, that's primarily me with Becky Huss and Amy Brown at the moment. And Amy Brown, not, not just in addition to her former, being formerly on this board, but she formerly owned a quilt, a quilt shop in the downtown area. So she's got very specific experience in this regard. And so these are items that if, if the board is willing to consider approval, could either approve, prove them all as a group, could approve them individually or ask the, ask questions and ask for it to come back.
I'd like to do it individually. You know, I have no problem with the Water Party, that, that sounds like it's got to have been a great success. Fernland dedication, like you said, is a one-time. Pet Parade, it looks like it's very, very low budget and might, might be something that kids would really enjoy. The Quilt Walk and Goat, Goat Song Parade, number one, Quilt Walk has the most, one of the larger expenditures of everything on here. But the National Quilt Museum is in Paducah, Kentucky, and the Texas Quilt Museum is in La Grange. What does Montgomery have to do with a quilt walk? And it, it seems like it's so specific to just a very small subset of, of folks that, you know, are involved in quilting. So I don't think that's necessarily a good expenditure for the city or that overall. I, I can't imagine how many people, you know, attend or even what, what all is involved. Likewise, on the Goat Song Parade, I'd like to see a massive car show here rather than, than something like this. But again, that's just my opinion.
Well, yeah, I'll say one thing about the Quilt Walk because the first I heard about it, you know, it left me, I guess essentially puzzled as to why anybody would want to come, look at quilts. And it turns out that not far down the road in the Catholic Church, several miles away, they do have a very large quilt following there. And I, I think it's probably a target population, but it seems to be a group that is very loyal within that target population. Yeah, yeah, the Goat Song Parade, that's more of a concept at this point, that the idea is, it was like the cities that have a cows on parade where you have decorated cows or different portions of the city. Well, in Montgomery, you know, we do have a history with the goats. So these would be, go with areas with businesses that have, that, that would choose to have one that want to be placed in that area. So that's a little more information on those two. As to taking them up, well, that's certainly the purview of the Board of Directors.
And if I could add on the Quilt Walk, so St. Mary's is in Planterville, which isn't exactly on the route to anywhere. And their third, third or fourth year, they had over ten thousand people there and made over thirty thousand dollars for their event. And they only stocked it because of volunteer fatigue, we'll call it. And Huntsville also had a very successful outdoor airing of the quilts, they called it, around their central square. And that one was halted because the ladies in the quilt guilds got tired of their husbands, these ladies were mostly elderly, they got tired of their husbands being up on ladders. And it was not something that was supported by the city. And so after the city realized how much tourism tollers they were losing, and by then it was too difficult for them to get it started back up again. Like Richard said, this is kind of a, it is a specialty subgroup, but I think you'd be surprised at how young and varied the audience and how far these people travel and how much money they spend. So I don't think actually the amount of money that is budgeted is actually all that much considering it's a startup event and the potential again for visitors, even if you just take a fraction of the people that came to St. Mary's.
St. Mary's is bizarre, is it not?
No, it was not, it was separate from the bizarre. Actually, their bizarre is another gigantic event that they do on a different, a different weekend. The quilt show was a, a three day series, it was, it grew to three days, but on the, I think it was the last weekend in April.
So how will the Quilt Walk benefit the citizens of Montgomery, the taxpayers?
So the same way really any event benefits the citizens and taxpayers of Montgomery. It brings people here who spend dollars. This is an outdoor event, so it also provides the aesthetic opportunity, or opportunity for people to see their city in a different way. All of the quilts will be hung outside. So anyone who wishes to walk through downtown and Fernland will be able to see the items on display. It's obviously free. So should they choose to enjoy fiber art, then they would benefit. I mean, it's an art display, a free art display.
Okay, where, where do you anticipate holding it? You said downtown and Fernland?
Yeah.
The St. Mary's event, that's a quote, it's the same event, the quilt?
No, the St. Mary's event is no longer being held.
Right, but it was a similar in as far as scope and events.
It's different, so they had all of theirs inside their church folded up on the pews and a few of them hanging on the balconies. Theirs was probably smaller in terms of the amount of space. It was smaller in terms of the, the event, yeah, the event space and the number of quilts that they had donated or on, on show. So that part of things was a much smaller, they had to work much, much less hard to get the quilts to be entered into their event. It's definitely a much more logistically difficult, this event is.
They'd be willing, well, I guess we can coordinate on this later, but maybe they'd be willing to help promote this event.
So Lorraine, Lorraine, the lady that was the driving force behind that has already been super supportive in terms of sharing her contact list and all of the, with all the guilds and the vendors and that kind of thing that she used. And I did go to the Quilt Walk in La Grange two weekends ago. And the, the Texas Quilt Museum is, it's definitely not as big as Paducah. And, you know, it, it's, it's a, it's not the Mecca, it's that, you know, doesn't block out Montgomery as a place to go for sure. If Huntsville can have a super successful quilt walk, then Montgomery can, can. It's, it's mostly about advertising and making sure that people are aware of it.
What, what do we spend on the Christmas?
The EDC budgeted two thousand dollars, I think, for each event, Richard, somewhere in there?
Sounds about right to me.
But both of those events have very little advertising cost because they're already established.
Is the higher cost is, you know, for instance, you've got police department on here, but not on some of the others? Is this because of the, we're anticipating more people?
Yeah, so when you have, we're, we're expecting vendors to be part of this and which means that you need to have police department expenses for overnight security.
Gotcha.
And they should probably be on all of them, to be honest. Just because the, unless they're, unless they're really small because it really needs to be part of the, you know, it's the police department having to have more people on duty than that really is a cost of the event.
Yeah, I think the only event on here that didn't have police department was in the Fernland one where we're still trying to work on the full planning budget there.
Yeah.
And an unplanned category, which, you know, part of, part of the unplanned part is how much security, security might be needed if some of this is gonna be outdoors and staged overnight.
It's not only Goat Song Parade either, but.
And, and, you know, the Goat Song Parade is essentially the concrete statues that would be, if approved, permanently planted, so.
Right, gotcha. Well, I don't know anything about quilt walks, so. But I'd be willing to see, you know, I think these events are interesting. If you want to see the turnout on them, I have an open mind on that.
Yeah, I, I was with you when I first heard it, Ryan, Quilt Walk. And as soon as I started poking around online, I, I felt like I wandered into a fringe community that is very active. It'd probably be if you piggybacked on my Facebook account and then you suddenly figured out how many people in this world are highly interested in running marathons and doing triathlons. Perspective of having no interest in them.
I'd like to see us table this and kind of get a feel from residents and taxpayers whether they would support something like this and attend and, and maybe, and if it is that successful, make it an annual event.
Well, you know, at this point, we really need to get going because these events require long range planning. And, you know, we're less than nine months out. So, you know, another month of plant, of non-planning gets to be somewhat difficult.
Okay, I move to fund and update existing budget categories and accounts for the Neighborhood Water Party, the Fernland Dedication, and the Montgomery Pet Parade.
Are we gonna, can we do those three and then we're gonna vote on the next two?
That's, that's up to the chair.
Yes, we can, we can start with those two, that's fine.
Those three?
Three.
The top three? I second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve the funding for the Neighborhood Water Party, the Fernland Dedication, tenth anniversary, and the Montgomery Pet Parade. This motion is debatable, amendable, and requires a majority vote. Any further discussion on this item? All those in favor of the motion that we fund and update the existing budget categories and account amounts for the Neighborhood Water Party, the Fernland Dedication tenth anniversary, and the Montgomery Pet Parade, say aye.
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 Aye. Those opposed say no. The motion passes unanimously, and we will fund and update the existing budget categories and accounts for the Neighborhood Water Party, the Fernland Dedication 10th Anniversary, and the Montgomery Pet Parade in the amounts shown in the attached items. Would anyone like to make any further motions on this item? Otherwise, I will. I would like to start by fund and update the existing budget categories and accounts for the Quilt Walk in the amount of $5,155. All right, hearing no second, this motion dies. Anyone else like to make any motions on this item?
I'd like to move to table the Quilt Walk and the Goats on Parade budget items for consideration in the next meeting.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we table the Quilt Walk and the Goats on Parade for the next meeting. This motion is debatable, amendable, and requires a majority vote. Any further discussion? All those in favor of tabling those two items for the second, or for the next meeting, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. The motion carries unanimously, and we will table the Quilt Walk and Goats on Parade for the next meeting. Item number nine, update on Montgomery Music and Mudbugs Festival. Richard?
Okay, this is not as an action item, but it is an update item. The Montgomery Music and Mudbugs Festival is scheduled for Saturday, March 27, 2001. It's on schedule for 1:00 PM through 10:00 PM. The event is being conducted by Charlie Diggs Entertainment and Promotions. It'll be conducted on private property over near the Ramsins Restaurant. The MEDC had previously budgeted $8,000 towards this event with the cost to be applied towards items that utilize city personnel, such as public works crews that might be involved in setup cleanup and takedown, police department involved in security and traffic control costs, and costs associated with social media promotion. At this point, it looks to be like there will be limited need for public works crews in locations unless there turns out to be significant cleanup costs. It's in the city roads and rightaways, which we're not anticipating. So the police department cost for security and traffic control will probably eat up the very large majority of this, in terms of a cost item. And, you know, the city's police department has been closely involved with Charlie Diggs Entertainment in the planning and coordination of this event. And so wanted to make this report to the MEDC, you know, so you knew where everything stood going forward. This event will occur before our next Board of Directors' meeting.
All right, any questions for Richard? Then with your approval, I'll move on to item number 10. Consider request by Tom Ward of Montgomery Soccer Club to move irrigation equipment approved in MEDC grant on December 5, 2017, to an alternate location.
Okay, Mr. Ward, let me know this afternoon he wasn't going to be able to be here this evening. Related to this item, the MEDC previously awarded a grant of $9,900 for this item, as shown in the attached minutes. That was from, I believe, it was the date December 5, 2017. This money was allocated as $6,900 for the water tap and pipe installation, and $3,000 towards the irrigation of equipment, with the MEDC maintaining the right of ownership of the irrigation equipment and limiting the removal of the equipment from the city limits. The organization has since moved their games to a new location from the site previously authorized in the original grant. Currently, the irrigation equipment is at the city's public workshop. Mr. Ward is asked to be able to take the equipment to an alternate location for repair and use with the club soccer program. Given the change of use request for the equipment, I felt I needed to come back to the EDC Board of Directors for clarification as to the proposed change of location and what was really meant by EDC maintaining the right of ownership of the equipment. And because I felt those minutes were very limiting, and unfortunately, there's no one left on the board from that timeline. So yet the EDC board is who I need to take my direction from. So I don't know if you want to have significant discussion about this now or bring it back next month with Mr. Ward present, or if you've even had significant time to review it.
Richard.
Do you know where the new location is?
I have asked, but I don't have a specific answer on that. And he'd also, he'd more spoken with Public Works Director Mike Muckleroy, but Mike said he hadn't specified a location at this time, so.
I think it's down in the woodlands that they play.
I just know I haven't seen them locally, so I wasn't even sure that they were playing at this time, especially with the pandemic. So, but I just don't know the answer to that question.
Move to table this until we can get more information from Mr. Ward, because if it is in the woodlands, it doesn't make a lot of sense for us to help fund that.
Well, and also, I would say that either way, I mean, it doesn't really, it's out of the city limit, so. I mean, he's not playing here, so in some ways it doesn't matter.
True.
And, you know, it was clear when the EDC made this, the grant was intended that the equipment stayed here. So if he moved off location, then he lost the equipment. But I think the real question is, what happened to it? I mean, realistically, what can we do with it?
And of course, one of my thoughts is, is, you know, if, if without clear direction from the EDC board, we hand it over and it doesn't come back, we really probably don't have any choice at that point because we've just lost it. So I really, that's why I really felt like I needed to get some clear direction from the EDC board. So I will presume, you know, presuming the tabling, then I will make sure Mr. Ward knows that we will take it back up again next.
Well, let's just decide now, because I think that if it's not here, he's not playing here, then what are we going to do with it? Is the city using it?
The city's not using it, and the Public Works Director says we don't really have a use for.
So then do we sell it in surplus?
I suppose you could also first offer to sell it to, back to the soccer field by. For some fun.
Well, how do we know they're not moving it to another location in the city? How do we know that?
Because those are the only soccer fields in the city, and they have cows on them. So there's no other public soccer fields in the city.
What about the next Fellowship of Montgomery? Is that public or is that church affiliated?
It's not inside the city limit.
Okay.
So can this equipment be used anywhere else on a city facility, Cedar Park? Or, I mean, I don't know. I mean, it sounds irrigation pipes and heads, right?
And that's where, when I discussed with the Public Works Director, he says we really don't have a use for this specific equipment. We, essentially, if we tried to make, tried to find a place to use it, we're essentially going out of our way to force the use of equipment that we otherwise wouldn't need.
Let's sell it.
So we either, I'd say we either sell it or surplus or give it away.
Do they not want to buy it?
Well, I haven't presented to them the opportunity to buy it. Because I don't have the authority to sell anything on behalf of the EDC. But I'd be happy to relay that to them if you, if the EDC wants to give me directions as to price and/or how to go about that specifically.
Ryan and Dan and Carol, what do you think?
If we look back at the original motion that was approved by the EDC in 2017, you know, $3,000 was applied to the irrigation equipment, and $6,900 was approved to the tap and piping. Well, that's still in place. Presumably, the pipe and the tapping will at some point be used for some benefit that the city could reap by a future connection there. With the $3,000 applied to the irrigation equipment, we could request to, you know, essentially sell it for $3,000 to them and have the EDC make hole on that portion of it.
I think we try to, I think we try to sell it or try to find someone in the city who could use it. And if the city's not gonna, if that is, if the city's not gonna use it or have any use for it in the foreseeable future.
Does the school district have any use for it? We could always ask them.
I haven't asked, but if the board wants me to take the time to look into a couple options and contact others about it, I will be happy to do that.
Ann?
Well, I just hate to give away 3,000 bucks. I mean, obviously, we're here to spend the people's money wisely. There's got to be some kind of value, even if the city can, or the EDC can recoup a tenth of it. I mean, depreciation from that many years and being used is probably not worth $3,000. Most of that was more than likely with labor.
Carol, what are your thoughts?
I would like to ask them if they're interested in buying it.
Okay. So kind of have a, and I would prefer to sell it as well. So I think we have a sell enthusiasm here. So can this go as direction from the board, Richard, and then you see what you can get and then come back to us for final disposition? Or do you want just a motion to sell or give to a local group if you can't sell?
Let me come back to the board with the final disposition on that because since there's an element of ownership, I would like to make sure that it's properly recorded and decided ultimately by the Board of Directors.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. Then do you feel yourself properly directed?
I do.
All right, then with the board's approval, we will move on from item number 10 to item number 11, Review of MEDC Social Media Program.
Starting last summer and continuing last fall, we implemented changes to refocus the emphasis on the information contained within the city's social media accounts. This was largely in response to how the COVID-19 pandemic changed how shopping and local tourism were conducted. In short, our focus was directed closer to home than it had been previously due to the changed habits of people staying closer to home and being less likely to take even a regional trip. Attached is an overview of how the city's social media has been managed, including metrics related to some of the accounts. You know, and then in my review report, in June 2020, the MEDC board discussed refocusing the emphasis of the social media efforts that the MEDC operates in marketing the city of Montgomery. Two of the primary changes from that meeting were targeting to increase the total audience and refocusing to reach a more regional audience. Shortly after that, we began utilizing the HootSuite software application to schedule and better control posts in both Facebook and Instagram, which later grew to include additional Facebook accounts for Fernland Historical Park and the city's Public Works Department. And I'd like to note that the city's police department has a Facebook account that is managed separately. Since the use of the HootSuite software began, the number of followers from the city's social media accounts have grown steadily. I expect this is most likely due to being able to schedule a consistent program of posts, which are often designed in a series on a popular interest topic. In recent months, these included a series on the goat naming contest among local elementary school students, Christmas event posts, and the current series that's running on local historical buildings. And to that, I'd also like to send a note of thanks to some of the information that we've gotten recently came from one of our directors, Ryan Lundine. So thank you, Ryan, for helping provide some of that additional information on the historic buildings. Most notably your own, but also.
No problem.
The period of February 12 through 25, 2021 was easily the most active viewing period for the city's social media and Facebook pages. This period included three of our most viewed posts on Facebook since re-targeting our efforts, if not going back longer. The third most viewed post was from February 15. It was announcing the city and MISD joint overnight shelter efforts. It reached over 23,000 people. The second most viewed post was from February 21 on the upcoming Montgomery Music and Mudbugs Festival, which reached over 43,000. And that was distinctly, you know, one of our account posts that got that audience. It was not just a post for the Mudbugs Festival, but it was originally. And the most viewed post was from February 15, 2021. That included photos of the recently snow-filled streets and historic downtown Montgomery, which I believe Ryan also had a handle on.
Yes, those were all Ryan's photos.
So Ryan, I didn't think, I bet you didn't know you'd have that much of a social media impact to the city when you got on the EDC board.
I'm curious if this makes me an influencer now.
And so since June 2020, the number of followers on the main city Facebook page has increased from 2,887 to 5,336, which is an increase of 85%. Since we made this effort to retarget our reach locally, our audience is up 64% from the Congo area, 93% from the Woodlands area, 102% from Magnolia, and 129% from Willis. During the same period, our audience has remained approximately predominantly female, with a change from 79 to 78%. And it is most concentrated in the 35 to 54-year-old range, going from 51% to 52%. Overall, however, there was a slight downward trend in age range, but not overly significant. If you had told me from the point of view of almost a year ago that we would have a significant increase in our followers but maintain the same demographics, I would have found that hard to believe, but what happened here? Prior to my employment with the city, the social media pages had been operated by Rebecca Huss on a volunteer basis. That continued into last fall, when the MEDC Board of Directors approved funds in the annual budget to compensate Miss Huss for this work as a consultant. Miss Huss is also reimbursed for certain related expenditures to social media posts to boost those posts by those items that were approved by the city administrator ahead of time. And the following pages that are attached, which I will not go through in detail, but are attached for you to view, are some of the data that was viewed for that report that go into demographics and some of the specifics I'm posting. I will point out there is a slight difference between the longer-term post reach in terms of the numbers they display versus the shorter term, when you look at the numbers off to the left. But the 40,000 range peak there in early February is consistent with the documented numbers that Facebook shows. And where I mentioned the boosting of posts, if you're looking at the secondary page, you have the lighter color, I'll say of orange versus the darker shade. It shows you the difference in some of them between the organic reach as well as the paid reach of some of those posts. And so, you know, essentially, you know, from the point of view that the direction was changed at the start of the pandemic, that's kind of how our, or rather, that is how, you know, our social media has changed in how we're reaching out there. And so if you have any questions on those, I'd be happy to try to take that.
Wasn't Jeff gonna kind of coordinate and look around? Wasn't Jeff gonna kind of coordinate and look around for other social media companies?
Uh, yes, I also got through, uh, I'm sorry, I was about to go through that after this item. I wanted to give you a chance for questions. Uh, I did get of uh, uh, from Jeff and I, I did speak with them. They are uh they don't do the kind of work that what we do here or what we've been doing here on these accounts. They don't maintain uh existing social media accounts. They're an advertising firm, so they create the ads that go into social media. Uh, I guess the, when I, when I discussed it with them, I described, uh, described it as they create the ads that fill the spaces between the posts and the gentleman laughed, but he said essentially that was correct. Uh, you, you, they're, they're an ad-driven firm, so they're, they don't do what it is that we're doing here. Although I do see that as we continue to grow, a firm like that is, you know, something that we probably might end up looking towards our services in the coming future. Especially if uh, if our numbers keep increasing like they have in the past. And uh, I, I'm sure that there are others out there that fill different niches within the social media field. It's just a prob, potentially a matter of finding them and locating them.
Yeah, I think uh Becky does a good job of keeping, well, she's got the local perspective and I think she does a good job of maintaining the posts, so appreciate her efforts. So I don't know how you would do that otherwise, because you need someone who's, who knows a local history and can develop those posts and stuff like that, so.
Well, answer to that, I mean, what you say, how you would do it otherwise, you know, one option is, you know, it could be done with someone on staff. The trouble is, we don't have the ability right now on staff to do that short of hiring someone and, you know, that, you know, that becomes, you know, if we create a staff position for that, then you end up with the balance of uh, of where the cost is. Uh, it gets to the old question of uh hiring someone on staff versus contracting something and uh well, you're in the contracting field of a sort, Ryan, as a consultant, so I think you understand that.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, I agree.
So if you want, I could then move forward with uh my next report.
I was gonna say, are there any other questions on item number eleven or we're good with moving Richard, uh, Richard moving forward to item twelve? City Administrator's Development Report.
I'm good with that.
All right, thank you, Richard.
All right, uh, touching on the development report, some of the key notes I uh want to hit on is uh both residential and commercial uh markets are strong, you know, in Montgomery. Uh, yeah, some of the high notes uh right now include uh, the construction residentially is continuing in Hills of Town Creek on the western side of the city. Uh, Town Creek Crossing has broken ground and is moving forward at the early stages on the eastern side of the city. On the commercial end, uh, you know, Panda Express, you know, is in the, uh, is in the process of plan review. And uh Auto Zone has broken ground. Uh, and so uh, it, there, there are others that are going through the various processes here in the city. But uh, you know, both residentially and commercially, but uh, as, as we're moving forward, you know, things are strong in those areas. Uh, and the G L O drainage project, uh, the plans, the potential plans are still under review by the G L O. Uh, at this time, it's becoming obvious we'll go past the timeline, the deadline on that. And the G L O is expecting us to submit an extension. Uh, at this point with the pandemic, uh, you know, that uh, that is just not unusual for what they're seeing and items like, unlike this for extensions to be needed. Uh, just because of the situation we've all been operating under in this world in the last year. Uh, on the downtown development plan, we've got a, uh, we have an internal staff meeting uh coming in about two weeks on that. And it sounds like that uh the good corporation is making good progress at this portion. Uh, you know, skipping down uh through into the engineering. The high point on the engineering report that I want to draw attention to is uh water, the waterline construction on the waterline project uh to expand the lines connecting the east and western parts of the city, going through the central area, you know, you yeah, the work is ongoing. It's been going on for uh, I get, think about four to five weeks now. Uh, they started work closer in a highly visible area around Cedar Break Park. Uh, they're currently uh working their way up uh on a, a, a Palm Street. And they're making, they're making pretty good progress right now in a very tight area and uh, you know, I, I will say one thing, I really like the way uh this particular contractor is working with the city and the engineers. Uh, they're probably keeping us about as well informed as I've seen a contractor working on a schedule of this type. And if there's any other questions on any of these reports, I'd be happy to try to take those.
Anyone? All right, then. Not seeing anything in executive sessions.
No, ma'am.
Does anyone have anything for board inquiry? All right, then, I'll take a motion for adjournment. Should anyone like to make one?
I would, I would move to adjourn.
Aye, second.
It has been moved and seconded that we adjourn and I will call us adjourned at seven fifty eight P M. Thank you, everyone, for your attendance at this long meeting. Thank you, Richard. Thank you, staff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.